Okay, City Manager, we are out of executive session. No action was taken. Can we continue on, please?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. At this point, I'd like to introduce the item, Work, Water, Labor Agreement with Ask Me Local 1294. I'd like to ask Carol Foreman to present on this item and answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, City Manager, and good evening, Mayor and Council members. I'm here to speak about, as the City Manager said, about the Ask Me Water contract. And actually, this year, it was just a wage re-opener, so we did not, I say, talk about the whole contract. So it's really pretty simple. And although we did actually agree to talk about some tough topics outside of the wage issue, just because we needed to correct some typos, and there were some clarifications we needed to make, those were all really insignificant. So the meat of the matter is the wage package. And the wage package that we agreed to, and has been ratified by the union, is that one-step increase for employees on their anniversary date. And for the 12 employees who are at the top step in the step in the matrix, that they would receive a one-time lump sum payment of $250. And if you look at, and what that comes out to, is for the cost of the wages and benefits just for 14, it just would be a little over $75,000. And the percent is 2.26 percent.
Excuse me, Carol.
Sure.
Are you referring to these?
Mm-hmm.
Can you tell me what page you're on? Can you guide us through to make sure we're on the same page?
I think it's page two.
Page two?
Well, I don't have that.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, just wanted to make sure we're on the same page. Thank you.
Okay, what, page one and two. Since this is a wage re-opener, I say we do not go in and change the contract. We do an amendment to the contract. And so what this is, is the amendment that will actually go with the contract, and has the different sections that I say we, I say, agreed to change, modify, or I don't think, in this instance, we added anything. And so it's a little different. I think we had the situation with the Teamsters. It was also a contract amendment. Does that help you? So let me turn back to... If you go to the very last page, and you're familiar with this format. This is the format we've been using since we started the discussions about the labor negotiations. And you will see, and particularly, the numbers in yellow, which are the, I say, what we're talking about tonight, what the increase in dollars, figures, and percent is for that one-step increase in the $250 lump sum payment. There are 63 members in this particular union. And the overall total cost, if you remember, because there are benefits that we have to pay that we would pay regardless if there's any increase or anything. So that's a different number, and that's always a little higher. And that would be a 3.44 percent increase to the total budget for the city.
Are there any questions for Carol? Karen?
One for Carol and one for the City Manager, if I might. And for Carol, are these step increases performance-based?
Yes, they are. Yes, they must meet expectations, or better, to qualify for that.
Thank you.
And my question for the City Manager would be, do we have this money in the budget?
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Compost?
Mr. City Manager, for me. What's the actual line item that we budgeted for in the 2014 for this? How high could this potentially go?
I'm not sure I'm following the question.
You said this is currently in the budget for 2014 that we passed, correct?
We incorporated all of our negotiations. We anticipated our offers as part of the budget process moving forward.
Right.
So that's in. I'm not sure, when you say how high can this go, I'm not sure.
So you budgeted for this? This number specifically?
Yes.
All right.
I would like to know, how did we come up with the $250, the lump sum of one payment, one time? How do we come up with that, Carol?
Well, there's always a conversation about folks who are, and you're familiar with, you were talked out then, I say, the feeling of the union is those folks are left out. And how do we, I say, treat those folks? And it's always an issue. And so in the last contract, there was also a one-time lump sum payment. And so we thought that was a way to, so we could get across the finish line.
So that's just in there? This is nothing added, it was just in there?
Well, I say...
And how many?
I don't want to say it's standard, but I say it has occurred in the past with this particular union.
And how many of those positions?
Twelve.
Twelve?
So that comes to $3,000 for that lump sum payment.
Okay.
And it's just a one, I say, one time, and it's paid on their anniversary date.
On their anniversary date?
Yes.
Okay, okay, thank you. Any other questions or concerns? Is anybody here from the union? Yes.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Pete Vobach. I'm the President of Local 1294, excuse me. Be happy to answer any questions.
Happy with the contract?
Absolutely. We ratified it. We are asking for, we realize this is just a work session, but next week, when it comes before you, we're asking for the Council and the Mayor's blessing on it.
Mr. Union?
Thank you, appreciate it.
City Manager?
Thank you very much. Deputy Mayor, at this point, I'd like to invite Mr. Whitaker to come forward and give an update on the Kansas River Levy Project.
Mr. Whitaker?
Good evening, thank you, Deputy Mayor, Council. And I have Don Rankin. He has a lot of the history in this project, so I've got him here with me. Primarily what we're coming to you on, this is the Levy Project, and he'll kick me if I'm talking wrong here. Obviously, with the Corps of Engineers. And we started into a project that was approved a few years back. The Corps has been through it, and they have come back with some modifications. There is an increase in the cost for the design, and of our portion of the design. We're not paying, we're paying, what, 20 percent? Don? 20 percent, you know, of the actual design costs. And then this ties in with the current legislation that's going through Congress right now with the WARDA, which would bring the construction money for this project. And so this is just an increase with, because of newer technology, newer design requirements, that they've come back to us and said that the design fee has gone up, and that our portion of that would be the $100,000. I, as far as a recommendation to the Council, I would encourage us to go forward with it. And the reason for that is, with the way Congress is set up right now, the Senate has passed the WARDA with our project in the list. The House is dealing with a bill that could possibly just appropriate money, and then we're going to have to fight to get our project back into it. If we were not to go forward with this amendment to this contract, I think we could send a message to the Corps that maybe we're, we don't think our project is as important as we started out, you know, for it. And obviously, and that's our, you know, that would be our concern. So I would want to emphasize that we kind of, you know, go forward with it for this portion. There's no guarantee that the WARDA will be passed. We all know that. But they do feel something will be passed this year, and like I said, the Senate has already passed it. And we're waiting on the House to make a, they think the House will probably, maybe be looking at something in the next two weeks when they come back in session here. Any questions or anything on it?
Any questions or concerns? Karen?
I did ask a couple of questions in the middle, prior to this meeting. But it sounds like, even if the WARDA weren't passed and the House weren't looking at this, our backs are against the wall, and we have to spend whatever they say we need to spend to get the engineering ready, right?
Yes, because this is, basically, this is the engineering. It takes engineering to 95 percent, correct, and construction to 35 percent. And you don't want drawings, and you don't want to go any further than that, because if the WARDA isn't passed for two more years, we don't want to go back and redo all the construction drawings. So they feel if they get to that point, we haven't wasted good money at that point. And then, once they know that there is funding to go ahead with it, then you would finish the construction drawings at that time.
Nonetheless, if they think it's going to cost another $100,000 bucks, we say yes or no.
Yeah, because we're only paying 20 percent. So unless we want to do all 100 percent, you know, that would be the other option, is to go it alone, and I, we know we don't want to go there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. And these funds, the $100,000 comes out of our utility, the fund we have available for the levy.
Yes.
I don't know for sure what it's called. So the funds are there. It's just using some of those funds that we have ready for this.
Yes.
It's already there.
Yes.
And I would just want to speak to the importance of this. You know, the whole thing is vital for economic development, for the city, for the levies, everything that is a part of this. That we certainly need this to move forward for many different reasons.
Yes.
Any other questions or concerns? We thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks for bringing Mr. Rankin with you. City Manager?
Deputy Mayor, thank you. That concludes all of the work session items.
We've got 15 minutes to spare. This concludes our work session.
The meeting begins at 6 o'clock, so we have to wait until 6 o'clock. Therefore, it is now 6 o'clock. Call the meeting to order. Please stand and give your attention to Councilwoman Nathan Schmidt for the invocation, or remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
I would like to observe a moment of silence to reflect on, in whatever way you choose, on the gravity of the decisions we're charged to make, as well as the effect of our actions on the lives of those that we serve. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a proclamation this evening in observance of Constitution Week. So I have here Laura Bond and members of the Daughters of the American Revolution of Shawnee County.
Topeka.
Topeka, all right?
Topeka Chapter.
And this is the proclamation. Whereas September 17, 2013 marks the 226th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary, and whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing each year of a proclamation by the President of the United States of America, designating the week of September 17 through 23 as Constitution Week, now therefore I, Larry Walgast, Mayor of the city, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17 to 23, 2013, as Constitution Week in the City of Topeka, and urge all citizens to reflect on the privilege of being an American with all the rights and responsibilities which that privilege involves. And Laura, if you want to make some comments.
On behalf of the Topeka Chapter of the Daughters of American Revolution, we thank you for this proclamation and to celebrate Constitution Week 2013. The tradition of celebrating the Constitution was started many years ago by the Daughters of American Revolution. In 1955, the Daughters petitioned Congress to set aside September 17 through 23 annually to be dedicated for the observance of Constitution Week. The resolution was later adopted by the U.S. Congress and signed into Public Law Number 915 on August 2, 1956, by President Dwight D. Eisenhower. The aims of the celebration are to emphasize citizens' responsibilities for protecting and defending the Constitution and for preserving its posterity, to inform the people that the Constitution is the basis for Americans' great heritage and the foundation of our way of life, and to encourage the study of historical events, which led up to the framing of the Constitution in September 1787. The DIR sponsors many events nationwide in our schools and our communities to heighten the awareness of our Constitution. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
There are no presentations this evening, so we will proceed with the roll call.
Mayor Walgast?
Here.
Ms. Hiller?
Here.
Mr. Compost?
Here.
Ms. Ortiz?
Here.
Ms. Everhart?
Here.
Ms. Dila Isla?
Here.
Mr. Manspeaker? Ms. Schwartz?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Harmon?
Here.
Councilman Mans speaker informed us that he is out of town at a conference this evening. Next is the consent agenda. And Council members, you will note that on the first Item A, there is a typo. It is, appointment is for a term ending August 31, 2016. And an error was made to make it 17. It is a three-year term. Legal has indicated by, it is, that is what the term is, so we can correct it in this manner. You make a note of it, and when it is approved, then that is all that has to be made. So if the clerk would read the consent agenda.
A is a board appointment recommending the appointment of Greg Schwert to the Topeka Shawnee County Riverfront Authority Board for a term ending August 31, 2016. B is a board appointment recommending the appointment of Bill Nager to the Topeka Sustainability Advisory Board for a two-year term ending September 30, 2015. C is a resolution introduced by Councilmember Karen Hiller granting Downtown Topeka Incorporated an exception to the provisions of City of Topeka Code Section 945-150@C concerning noise prohibitions. D is a resolution introduced by Councilmember Sylvia Ortiz granting Matilda Sanchez an exception to the provisions of City of Topeka Code Section 945-150@C concerning noise prohibitions. E is denial of claim for gray bill construction in the amount of $68,011.55 due to additional expenses incurred in completing a street improvement project on Northwest Topeka Boulevard. F is minutes of the regular meeting of August 20, 2013, and August 27, 2013, and there are no applications this evening.
Council members, that is the consent agenda. What is your pleasure? Mr. Compost moves to approve. Ms. Dela Isla, seconds. Discussion. All those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no.
So we have eight yes?
Eight having voted yes. The consent agenda is approved as read. I would like to introduce the two appointees. Greg Schwert, if you would stand, has been appointed to the Topeka Riverfront Authority. Mr. Schwert is, of course, involved with Schwert Design Group. We appreciate your willingness to serve. And also, we have Bill Nager, who is Vice President with Bartlett &amp; West. He is a professional engineer, LEED certified, certainly has background in sustainability issues that he will be working on the Sustainability Board. Thank you both for your service. We appreciate it. Okay, we will proceed with unfinished business. The clerk will read Item A on the resolution.
A is a resolution introduced by Councilmember Michelle Dila Isla granting Boss Hogs an exception to the provisions of City of Topeka Code Section 945-150@C concerning noise prohibitions.
Mrs. Dela Isla?
Yes, as our conversation last time that we met, one of the concerns was that they wanted to make sure that we had the actual date that the events were happening. The other thing was the frequency, that there was going to be a disturbance to the neighbors. Boss Hogs has reduced this to only one date. They have it as October 12, and they are petitioning the Council's approval so that they can continue and finalize. This would finalize their series of concerts that extended throughout the summer. I would like to make a motion to approve.
It's been moved to approve the resolution. Is there a second? Ms. Schwartz, seconds. Discussion. Yes, Ms. Ortiz.
Thank you. So what I'm hearing is October 12 is the only date that they need it for?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Another discussion? All those in favor, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no.
We have eight yes.
Eight having voted yes, the resolution is approved. Item B, Ordinance on the Public Building Commission.
B is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Jim Coulson amending City of Topeka Code Section 27030, and specifically repealing said original section concerning the functions of the Public Building Commission. Final reading.
Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Approval would amend the current provisions related to the acquisition of sites to be made available for use by governmental entities. Mr. Sablet is going to provide a brief overview of the revisions to the ordinance that are being recommended and be available to answer any questions. But prior to doing so, I'd like to maybe turn this over to you, Mayor, and you can recognize some of the people who are here and make any comments on this prior.
Okay, thank you. We have three individuals that have signed up to speak on that. The first is the KBI Director, Kirk Thompson. Mr. Thompson, if you would proceed, and I assume, give us, provide some background for us.
Mr. Mayor, members of the Council, good evening. I really appreciate the opportunity to talk with you today, and thank you in advance for your consideration of these changes to the municipal code that will allow us to proceed with the building of a new forensic laboratory for the state of Kansas on the grounds of Washburn University. And what I want to do this evening is give you an indication of why this project is so important. The KBI provides forensic laboratory services to all law enforcement agencies across the state of Kansas. The two exceptions are Sedgwick County and Johnson County that have their own forensic laboratory capacities. We provide service for over 400 law enforcement agencies and over 100 prosecutor's offices. And I want to mention that virtually every crime that's reported in the state of Kansas has some measure of physical evidence associated with it. That physical evidence is collected by local law enforcement, packaged and submitted to the Kansas Bureau of Investigation, where our professional, highly-trained scientists examine that evidence. They report their findings to local prosecutors and law enforcement officers, and then they testify before juries to provide the input, the insight that they've gained through the examination of that evidence. Physical forensic examinations of evidence are absolutely essential to the criminal justice system these days. Now, the KBI laboratory that we're currently in, our main facility, is in a 1928 school building at 17th and Topeka. The building was retrofitted for a laboratory in our operations back in 1984, but that's many days past, and we've greatly exceeded the capacities of that building. So what does that mean to this group? And what does it mean to the state of Kansas? Well, our facilities are preventing us from providing service to law enforcement and prosecutors at the level that we need to do. We did a survey of our customers, our prosecutors and law enforcement agencies. 41 percent of those agencies dismissed or reduced criminal charges against defendants because of our inability to provide timely results to forensic examinations. That is totally unacceptable. It is absolutely the wrong direction for the state of Kansas to go. So to address that situation, in 2013, we received an appropriation from the Kansas Legislature to begin preliminary planning to build a new laboratory. Those plans were to be in partnership with Washburn University, and I'll explain that a little bit more here in a minute. But preliminary plans were completed, and we went back to the Legislature who authorized us to participate and partner with Washburn University to build the facility. And they appropriated 3.5 million for this fiscal year to get us going. The Legislature looked to Washburn University to help provide a funding mechanism, and for us to enter into, us being the KBI in the state of Kansas, to enter into a long-term lease with Washburn to satisfy the debt and continue operations of the facility. Washburn and the KBI have partnered with Topeka Public Building Commission to facilitate the funding for that project. So let me tell you real quick what the project is. It's a modern, multi-story facility that will be used as a forensic laboratory. The proposed facility will have about 100,000 square foot of usable space. 12,000 square foot of that space will be used in conjunction or in partnership with Washburn University for training and research. Our preliminary planning indicates that the project, total project cost will be around $55 million. And it will be located on Washburn's campus. If you're familiar with the campus, it's near the intersection of DeRoe Street and Washburn. This is going to be an additional facility. It is, we will maintain our existing two facilities at Topeka Boulevard and 17th, and they'll house our investigative and information services operations. So what makes this project so unique? And why, in addition to its importance, the partnership between a criminal justice agency, a university, a public building commission, a legislature, the city? It's a very unique partnership, and I think it will serve the citizens of this city and the state of Kansas very well. But second and most interesting to me is, we partnered with Washburn because universities and forensic laboratories have a lot of things in common. They share a lot of resources that could benefit the state and the city. And we need highly-educated forensic scientists, and they are very difficult to find. We have trouble recruiting and retaining those scientists. We believe that the partnership with Washburn will greatly assist us in recruiting those individuals. We need those highly-educated scientists. Washburn has programs to help us get them. We want to work together to attract the best students to Washburn. We want to work together to provide the best educational and training programs for our employees, students coming there, and our future employees. We want to provide... We want to provide students with real-world experiences that can help them and help us, because we want to keep the best of the best here. That's one of the main benefits of this collaboration for us. We'll keep those students here in Topeka, working for the state of Kansas, working for the city of Topeka, and forwarding a public safety agenda. And for that, this is a great project. I am really proud to be a part of it. I'm excited about what we're going to be able to accomplish here, and on behalf of myself, and I think Dr. Farley's going to talk here in a moment, and honestly, on behalf of the entire public safety community, this is very important, and I really appreciate you considering your support of this code change to make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you. That's very helpful to have. Councilmembers, questions for the Director? Yes, Mr. Harmon.
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Thompson, thank you for your testimony this evening while this was working its way through the legislature. How many other communities wanted this lab constructed?
I don't know that I could tell you a specific number of communities that were interested. We had many legislators that, "Why wouldn't you want to put this in our community?" type question. And I had to respond that our resources are here, our forensic scientists are here in Topeka, our interest is staying here in Topeka, and our interest is in building the facility here, so we didn't really entertain anything further.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Other questions? Thank you, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next is Washburn University President, Jerry Farley. If you would, we can hear the Washburn's perspective a roll.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, Mr. Manager, I'm excited to be here. This is going to be a great project. When the two agencies, and then all the one, all the other agencies that the Director mentioned a moment ago, come together, work together, to create something that is going to be so positive, how can we all do anything but celebrate that? Governments can work with one another. We can get things done by cooperating with one another. So we're excited to do this. It's kind of interesting how the project actually began. It has its roots probably seven or eight years ago, when we were renovating our science building on campus, but the atmosphere wasn't right at that time, the partnerships weren't growing at that time. And so it all went dormant, and we built a new, a new science hall on campus. Almost two years ago now, we got a call from a number of different state officials asking about that project, and would we still be interested in doing something? And we said we'd be glad to, we'd be glad to talk about that. So we began meetings, talked with a number of highly-placed state officials, and the essence of the project was that we could be help, we could be helpful in making the project come about. We could provide support services, which we continue to do now, provide support services to help get the building built. And we could provide financial services. We could look at our financial statements, and we concluded that we could borrow money without impairing our financial statements, but the state at that time said that, "Well, we'll put up half of it in cash." We'll put half of the money up in cash. So the impact on our financial statement at that moment in time was probably going to be somewhere around 20, $20 million, and that we could do. It works its way through another year, and we come down to about this time last year, and the state said, "We think we'll just pay for the whole building." Well, we go, "Okay, that's fine with us as well. That's good." We got to the legislative session, and it moved from being half to a whole to being none. And so, we then said, "That's too big for us. We can't do that much." So we, and I was unaware of this, the great work that Topeka Public Building Commission had done for the city and for the state in past years, with the SRS building, with the Curtis Office Building, and so we said, "Maybe they can help with the financing of this building, or help us get the financing together." We looked at the state's financing branch as well, and concluded that that didn't work too well. But it looked like the Topeka Public Building Commission might be the vehicle that would work. The problem was that, that language to create building commissions all over the state, and there are many of them all over the state, it included the fact that they could, these building commissions could do work for almost anyone. They could do work for universities, they could do work for community colleges, they could do work for cities, they could do work for the state. They couldn't do work for the municipal university. And so we had to begin the process of getting a statutory change to permit the building commission to do that. Then, as we got more into it, we realized that the building commission had a defined territory, and that didn't include the Washburn campus, and so thus, we are, we are here tonight in support of this resolution. We think it's going to be a good project. We think all the things that the Director just said will occur. Faculty interchanges with the KBI staff, KBI staff teaching classes for us, student internships, student job opportunities, and then trained scientists at the end of, at the end of their educational experience. We have very fine forensic chemistry, forensic biology, we've got a CSI unit, we have computing, forensics, all of those things that KBI has to have trained scientists for, we can help with over a period of time. And we think it'd be a great addition to our campus, bring great prestige to our campus to have that facility there. Be glad to respond to any questions you might have.
Are there questions for Dr. Farley? Seeing none, thank you very much, we appreciate your testimony.
Thanks, thanks.
Third speaker is Rick Winkowski, who is the Vice Chair of the Public Building Commission. Mr. Winkowski.
Good evening. I'm Richard Winkowski, I'm the Vice Chairman of the Public Building Commission. As you know, the commission was created by Kansas statute and by city ordinance. The members of the commission, besides myself, are Ned Neusebaum, Randy Clayton is the Secretary, and Randy's here tonight, Mark McGivern, Larry Robbins, Dean Farrell, and Bob Story. Susan Mock is our legal advisor, and she is also here tonight. I'm here today to support amendments to the Topeka City Code that will allow the Topeka Public Building Commission to issue revenue bonds to build and equip a forensic science laboratory on the campus of the Washburn University for the Kansas Bureau of Investigation. As you heard, this is a collaborative project between KBI, Washburn, Topeka, state of Kansas, that will create jobs, educational opportunities, and improve services for the entire state of Kansas. The amendments to the city code enlarges the boundaries of the Topeka Public Building Commission to allow the commission to build the facility at Washburn University. It incorporates recent statutory changes that allows the commission to perform its functions for municipal universities, and it allows competitive market conditions to exist to ensure that the city of Topeka is able to secure this important state facility for the KBI. I urge you to support this amendment, and we'll answer any questions you may have.
Are there questions for Mr. Winkowski? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your coming before us. That completes the comments. Now we have, the, Mr. Sablet is going to speak to the ordinance.
We talked about this a bit in work session a week ago. The KSA 12-1757 authorizes the city to create a public buildings commission, which is a separate municipal corporation from the city. It allows the PBC to acquire property and land for the construction of public building and issue revenue bonds for the purposes of acquisition and construction of those buildings. And again, I know I talked about this, but these are not city bonds, these are bonds that will be, revenue bonds will be issued by the PBC, which is a separate municipal corporation. The current project, I think they've explained in detail what the project is, in terms of amendments to our ordinance to accomplish what needs to be accomplished. Line 17 through 19 expand the district in which the PBC can operate, and I know there had been a request for a map, and I provided a before and an after map in the weekly report that went out last Friday to show the different boundaries and how that would be expanded to incorporate Washburn University. There are several lines, lines 25, 28, 40, and 41 include the term municipal university to allow construction at Washburn University. Line 67 changes the collection and payment lieu of taxes by the PBC to "may" instead of "shall," so that was the change in the pilot. And line 78 mandates substantial compliance with city or state procurement statutes. So those are the four changes that would be required under our ordinance for the PBC to move forward with this project.
Are there questions? Discussion, Mr. Harmon.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm making a motion to adopt the ordinance.
Okay, it's been moved to adopt the ordinance. Ms. Dela Isla, seconds. Discussion. Mrs. Heller.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question for, for Legal, but before I ask it, I totally support this project. So, I appreciate the work that everybody's done on it, and I want it here, and I want it just as it's, as it's been proposed. In terms of changes to our ordinance, what we're talking about is changing our enabling ordinance, not the terms of this particular arrangement. And I am fine with everything in there, too, except I have concerns about the change on line 67 regarding the pilots and changing that enabling ordinance language from "shall" to "may." In particular, I don't think we need to do that to get this project, and I'm concerned about its future implications for future projects that we would have. So my question to Legal then would be, do you see this, the change in the language from "shall" to "may" as, as significant for this particular project?
I think in conversations I've been involved with, with the Public Building Commission, with the state, with Washburn, that it is, it is significantly important to the project. Essentially, the Public Building Commission is there to help construct government buildings, and governments tend to not tax each other's, the state doesn't tax the city, the city doesn't tax the state, and there's good reason behind that. And if we start getting into this discussion, I'm afraid of where it could go. If the PBC can set their pilot however they want to set it, if they, if we keep the "shall" language in there and they decide they want to charge a dollar, they can charge a dollar. If down the line they want to raise that pilot, they could raise that pilot. So I think giving the PBC the ability to determine on a project-by-project basis if a pilot should be charged or should not be charged, I think is important to this project. And the conversations that I've had with Ms. Mock, who is the attorney for the PBC, with the state, with Washburn, I think it's important that the, that the language is "may", that it gives them the flexibility based on the project to determine if a pilot is appropriate, because you can imagine there might be certain types of projects where they look at and decide, you know, a pilot, based on the type of city services that this is going to take, we may need to look at a pilot. But I think leaving the, or change the language to "may" is important, it gives the PBC the flexibility to meet the needs of the KBI and of Washburn. And again, I think there's a broader policy issue when we start taxing state entities, that I'm not sure that's a road that we want to go, go down, because that's a two-way street, so.
If I may ask one other, I guess we're, we're off this, we've been involved as a council in terms of city taxpayer money and precedent in, for instance, labor contracts whereby, you know, if you close a door or open a door, all of a sudden you end up not even negotiating about that topic. Like, for instance, if we say that we can, we could go on a range of this much to this much, we end up at the top end all the time in terms of increases. My concern is not for this project, because if the Public Building Commission already has the authority to go to a dollar on this project, then if they feel that it should be a dollar, my concern isn't about this project, it's about having the term "may" in there for future projects. This can be parking garages, it can be buildings, it could be a whole campus, it could be just a specific, small entity, there's a broad range of what the Public Building Commission can do. And my concern is if it just says "may," will that automatically have anybody who reads this say, "Oh, well, obviously we don't need a pilot"?
Could you repeat that last sentence, Councilwoman?
If we say "may," would anybody who was considering doing a building, asking us to assist with a building in the future, look at that and go, "Oh, well, obviously, we don't need, we should negotiate that there's no pilot because it's optional"?
I, I can't speak for what any future projects can be. I understand your concern, I thank you for your comments, but I have a hard time looking into the future and seeing what future projects can be, but I can say when you look at the statute, when you look at the ordinance, the, who you're dealing with are governmental entities. It's, I think school districts are included, in their cities, the county, the state, it's not Walmart. I mean, it's not a private entity that you're dealing with, so taxing, any time you look at this, you're going to be looking at taxing a public, a governmental entity of some sort. So, and I, I don't know how future, I can't speculate on what future projects will assume by the language. The language is what the language is, so.
Okay, we'll have Mr. Schmidt.
I want to, first, I want to, as somebody with a Washburn degree, I want to say that I very much so support this. I also had an issue with the, the "may" "shall," at least a historical issue with it. Do we know at any time that, that we've used this funding mechanism? Has there ever been a pilot paid for the Curtis Building?
No.
For no?
The members of the PBC and Mr. Wolfher, and they would have that history more than I would, and I don't believe so.
And I don't believe it was available at that time. What I understand, it was, this was enacted after those buildings were built, or it was the city added it after that time.
That's correct, Mayor. There was a, there was a statutory change that allowed, and we changed our ordinance after the Curtis Public Building, Curtis Building, so this is the first building post-pilot language.
That put the "shall" in, into place, okay?
Thank you. Other discussion, what is your pleasure? There, we have, we have a motion and a second, thank you. Other discussion. If not, all those in favor of the ordinance vote yes, those opposed vote no.
We have eight yes.
Eight having voted yes, the ordinance, Public Building Commission, is passed. We will proceed with item C, ordinance on the flood levy.
C is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Jim Colson authorizing improvement project number T-831-000, which provides for the design of corrective measures for four levy units as more specifically described herein, all pursuant to Section 812-1 of the Code of the City of Topeka, and specifically repealing ordinance number 19293. Final reading.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Approval would increase the total budget, project budget by $100,000. The total design cost in 2009 was projected to be 2.1 million, and has increased to 2.5, roughly 2.5 million, and increased to $409,000. The city's cost share portion of this is $102,325, which will make the city's total new design share 627,325. The project budget is for 650, so it already, it covers that to allow for contingencies. At this point, I'd like to ask Doug Whitaker, Public Works Director, to make himself available to provide any additional information or to answer any questions.
We had a presentation on this earlier. Do the council members have additional questions? If not, disclosure. Ms. Ortiz. Ms. Ortiz moves to approve the ordinance. Second, Mr. Harmon, seconds. Discussion. All those in favor vote yes, opposed vote no.
We have eight yes.
Eight having voted yes, the ordinance is approved. Going to item D, ordinance on obligation bonds.
D is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Jim Colson authorizing the issuance of $9,800,000 aggregate principal amount of general obligation bond Series 2013B of the City of Topeka, Kansas, under the authority of KSA 10-101 to 125 inclusive, KSA 12-110C, KSA 12-6A01 at Seek, and Charter Ordinance Number 89 of the city, all as amended. Final reading.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like at this point to bring Jeff White, Principal of Columbia Capital, the city's financial advisor, to provide information on this and several other items that are going to come forward this evening.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening. Jeff White with Columbia Capital Management, good to see you all, happy September. I'm going to, it feels like August, all those nice days outside when we were in the budget hearings, yeah, this is our payback for that, right? I'm going to talk about this item, the next item, which is another ordinance, and then three resolutions that are on the agenda tonight, so I'll give my presentation now and then you won't have to hear it again on the, on the rest. We were on the bond market today with one series of tax-exempt bonds, a series of taxable bonds, and one series of one-year temporary notes. The notes in the tax-exempt bonds fund a mix of special assessment projects and general government projects. The taxable bonds fund the Retirement Reserve smoothing project that we talked about as part of the budget process as well. We have been facing, in the municipal market, very challenging markets really all summer. In fact, I'll give you kind of a staggering statistic. The, the 20-year AAA municipal bond rate at the beginning of the year was 2.43%, and it was 4.23% today. So from 2.43% to 4.23%. So we've been wondering for about five years when interest rates were going to go up. We have our answer. Most of that loss actually occurred from about May 1 forward, so... So significant buyers of municipal bonds include retail folks, you know, individuals buying $5,000 or $15,000 worth of bonds at the short end of the yield curve, say through 10 years. Insurance companies and mutual funds are the other large buyers. And for more than four months running, we've seen money moving out of municipal market mutual funds to other asset classes. And so as that money goes out, interest rates start to go up, because we have fewer buyers interested in looking at the bonds. So we've seen quite a bit of upward pressure on municipal bonds, and we're affected in our market by the same things that affect the treasury market, worries about Middle East security. The big thing that's driving rates north is this feeling that the economy in fits and starts is getting better. And as the economy improves and we start going trending up on the business cycle, we see long-term interest rates trend upward. And of course, we have this ongoing question about when is the Fed going to stop artificially suppressing interest rates at the lower end of the yield curve? And we'll start to see short-term interest rates rise as well at some point. That trend has not started yet. The good news that, is that we had excellent sales. The city offers its bonds typically through competitive sales, which is the analog of a sealed bid. We send out bid specifications called a notice of sale to the market. We say, "Show up at this date and this time." It's all done electronically. Folks show up, and at 10 o'clock, or whatever the appointed time is, the bids are opened again electronically. And the bidder that produces the lowest cost of funds wins the, wins the bid. So in that type of a circumstance, the more bidders you have, the better typically the outcome is. And we had a great turnout today. We had an excellent turnout today on all three sales. In fact, we had more than a dozen different firms respond across the three sales, which was really, really nice. So the outcome of the sales met or exceeded our expectations. We looked, as we put our pre-pricing numbers together, we looked at other transactions in the market and how Topeka has typically fared compared to benchmarks. And we put together our own sense of where we think the bond should price, given where markets are that day. And we ended up better than that, and we looked very competitive against other transactions in the market. So as we discussed, this summer, when we started, or we, when the council approved the special assessments, this is really the culmination on those projects, at least, of actions that you took maybe upwards of three years ago to approve projects. So we have temporary notes that we issued last summer that come due on October 1. These transactions will refund or redeem those notes, either in new temporary notes that'll last for another year, or in bonds which will pay off over the next 20 years. So an excellent turnout, a good result. You have, you should have a summary sheet at your place, which shows you what the interest rates look like. I told Kalen Dwyer, the analyst that worked on the, on the transaction, that he's never going to be able to do this again. We had one series of bonds that produced a true interest cost of 4.000%. We had the series of taxable bonds, which are five-year maturity, that produced an interest rate of 2.000%. He'll never be able to do that again. Interestingly, I mentioned, the long end of the curve has increased quite dramatically, but our one-year temporary notes have a yield today of less than half of what they were last year. So we've seen the short end of the curve continue to be suppressed both by Fed action and by concerns about what's happening internationally as well. So our one-year temporary notes will yield .24%, which is pretty staggering over the next year. So especially, a significant chunk of those temporary notes are related to special assessment projects, and the developers of those projects benefit dramatically. We talked about what an incredible benefit special assessment projects are to developers in our community. They're borrowing money at our credit, and they're doing so at a quarter percentage point of interest over the next year, which is, which is terrific. So presuming your approval's tonight on these transactions, the bonds and the notes will close the last day of the month, and we'll be on our way with, with new bond proceeds to fund projects underway and to permanently finance projects that are already concluded. Mr. Mayor, thank you.
All right, now, let's go back. We're on item D, which is the general obligation bonds. And for the council members, if you, you picked up on that description, this is where we are funding, these are the 20-year bonds for, the projects have already been completed. Now we know exactly what the true cost is, and that's why we wait to this point, actually, and then we sell the bonds, so we know exactly the amount that, of the bonds. And the amount for those, first, on, in item D, those, the general obligation bonds, what is the amount for those?
$9,790,000.
Nine hundred, okay. That's where we have the 9.8 there, which is a little bit higher than that. And so when we, the motion would be approving the amount that is stated in the bonds, which is slightly less than the amount that is listed here in the, in the information.
Mr. Mayor, the ordinance, which, which you're considering on old business right now, authorizes the sale. And then the resolution under new business authorizes the city's agreement with the bondholders as, as to the terms and the conditions of those bonds.
All right. In hearing that, is that sufficient for understanding, Ms. Everhart?
Just move to approve.
Move to approve. Discussion, a second? Was there a second that I missed? I'm sorry, Ms. Delise, a second. Discussion. All those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no. I vote yes, sorry.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes, the ordinance is passed. The second, next ordinance is E, which is also general obligation bonds that Jeff described. These are ones that we approved as part of the budget to level the retirement aspects. You want to speak again to that?
Mr. Mayor, if I might, two very quick comments. I, I feel Mr. Wolf, looking at me behind me, Phil Wolf is the city's bond counsel, all of these stack of documents are his fault, they're not mine, so you can blame Phil. It's been a pleasure to work with Phil over the years. The one other comment I neglected to make, and I wanted to, since Pam is sitting here and hopefully Tina is watching on TV. When, one of it, when we indicated to you over the summer that the city had produced an audit on time this year, one of the benefits we mentioned was the fact that it would make the bond market happy. The bidder who won the bid on both series of bonds, Robert W. Barrett out of Milwaukee, is one of the firms that told us that they would not be able to bid if the audit were late. So this is prima facie evidence about how important it is that that audit was delivered timely. As the best bidder on both of these sales likely would not have participated in the sale today if our audit had been delivered late. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Other questions, comments, your action?
Move to approve.
Mr. Schmidt moves to approve the ordinance. Ms. Delise, a second. Discussion. All those in favor, vote.
Mayor.
I'm sorry, Ms. Hiller.
Just a brief comment. I think all of you know how I feel about borrowing money for this purpose, and so I will vote, I understand everybody's thoughts, we've talked it through. I will vote no, and I do hope that this circumstance doesn't come up again. Thank you.
All right. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I don't believe the ordinance was actually read.
Thank you. That's, that's important that we do that. The clerk will read the ordinance.
D is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Jim Colson, authorizing the issuance of $5,000,000 aggregate principal amount of taxable general obligation bond Series 2013C of the City of Topeka, Kansas, under the authority of KSA 10-101 to 125 inclusive, the Home Rule Authority granted to the cities of the state of Kansas by Section 5 of Article 12 of the Kansas Constitution, and Home Rule Ordinance Number 19841 of the city, all as amended. Final reading.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Discussion. Mr. Campos.
I don't know if this would be directed to the city manager or Mr. White, but if we authorize this, that $500 million, excuse me, $5 million will ultimately help us by increasing our ending balance, correct? No?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Campos, this, these funds will be deposited in the retirement reserve, which will improve the ending balance in that fund, and then those funds will be available to, or for the payment of final payouts of leave, approved leave, as individuals leave the city.
If I recall, in the budgetary process, we only needed $500,000. Why are we 4.5 over? Is that correct?
No, it's not. We talked about the fact that this transaction would allow us to save in our '14 budget $500,000, which helped out our general fund balance. And the way we're doing that effectively is by taking what, what looks to be a peak in those payments, or potential payments of those retirement leave payouts over the next, well, the remainder of '13 and into '14, and smoothing those payments over time into '15, '16, and '17, where we would expect lower payments. So instead of having two years of high payments and three years of lower payments, we're using these funds to produce five years of medium payments. And that first year of medium payment, that incremental difference, is the $500,000 number you remember related to the general fund.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Other questions? All right, Mr. Savlin.
Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure if there was a motion or a second on this specific issue.
Yeah. Mr. Schmidt moved, and Ms. Delise, a second.
I just wanted to make sure we were.
We move along quickly on some of these, but yet we do want to take the appropriate time and the necessary steps. All those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no. I vote yes.
We have, let's see, seven yes.
Seven having voted yes, the ordinance is approved. We go to new business, and now we deal with the resolutions, dealing with what we just handled. First item is a resolution on temporary notes.
A is a resolution introduced by City Manager Jim Colson, authorizing and directing the issuance of temporary note Series 2013A of the City of Topeka, Kansas, in the aggregate principal amount of $25 million for the purpose of providing funds to pay the cost of renewing a portion of the Series 2012A temporary notes of said city dated September 27, 2012, and pay a portion of the cost of certain improvements in said city.
Mr. City Manager.
Approval would fund special assessment projects, fire station improvements, bridge improvements, street improvement projects, park improvements, two utility projects. Mr. White is available if there's any specific questions on this issue.
Okay, and now, these are the temporary notes that get our projects underway, that we have already approved. So that's, that's what we're doing at this point. Are there additional questions? Mr. Harmon?
I don't have a question, but I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution.
Okay, Mr. Harmon has moved to approve. Mrs. Everhart has seconded. Discussion. All those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no. I vote yes.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes, the resolution is approved. Item B, a resolution on the general obligation bonds. The clerk will read.
D is a resolution introduced by City Manager Jim Colson, prescribing the form and details of general obligation bond Series 2013B of the City of Topeka, Kansas, in the aggregate principal amount of $9,800,000, the issuance of which were authorized by the city pursuant to its ordinance adopted and approved September 10, 2013, and authorizing certain other documents and actions in connection with the issuance of the bonds.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Your Honor. Approval would fund various projects in the amount of $9.8 million, plus issuance and insurance cost, interest costs.
Are there questions?
Thank you, Your Honor. Motion to adopt the resolution.
Been moved to adopt the resolution. Mr. Schmidt, seconds. Discussion. All those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no. I vote yes.
We have nine, nine yes.
Nine having voted yes, the resolution is approved. We go to item C, the resolution on the taxable obligation bonds. The clerk will read.
C is a resolution introduced by City Manager Jim Colson, prescribing the form and details of the taxable general obligation bond Series 2013C of the City of Topeka, Kansas, in the aggregate principal amount of $5 million, the issuance of which were authorized by the city pursuant to its ordinance adopted and approved September 10, 2013, and authorizing certain other documents and actions in connection with the issuance of the bonds.
Mr. City Manager.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. As Mr. White had indicated, approval would fund the city's obligation, make final payments, and smooth out those payments over the next several years.
Council members, are there, is there discussion or a motion? Mr. Harmon?
Thank you, Your Honor. Motion to adopt the resolution.
He's moved to adopt the resolution. Mr. Schmidt, seconds. Is there a discussion? All those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no. I vote yes.
We have seven yes, two no.
Seven having voted yes, the resolution is approved. We will go to item D, project budget and resolution for the Great Overland Station project.
D is a project budget in the amount of $585,300, and a resolution introduced by City Manager Jim Colson, authorizing improvement project T-131028, which will restore three railroad cars and an authentic Santa Fe depot, as more specifically described herein, all pursuant to Section 812-1 of the Code of the City of Topeka.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. I'm going to provide some background.
Thank you. Approval would authorize the restoration and preservation of three railroad cars and an authentic Santa Fe depot at the Great Overland Station Museum. Mr. Hunt is available to provide information? No? Or Doug Whitaker? Thank you.
That's what happens, you sit behind the podium, because we can't, we can't ever see that.
Mr. Mayor, counsel. This is a project that was awarded a transportation enhancement grant back this spring, and so the 80% of the funds are coming from the transportation grant. And then the organization, the Great Santa Fe Board, is actually providing the matching funds, but because it is a, the grants all go through the city, the city has to manage this program, and so there would be no expense to the city, except we would probably have some administrative time and like that assisting with the project, because all of the paperwork would have to be going through the city, and the engineering department would assist, and also finance from the standpoint of, you know, grant money and like that. So that is the extent. I believe Beth.
Ms. Fager is here, if there are other questions?
Yes, from them.
Okay, so, you understand, council members, it's a grant that really comes through the city. We do some of the administrating of it, but it's really a project there, and it goes for the restoration and preservation project at the Great Overland Station.
Correct.
Are there questions? Ms. Schwartz.
I'll just move the adoption of the resolution.
All right. Mr. Campos will want to second. Is there discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Campos.
I just want to give a quick status report. Thank you, Mr. Whitaker. I appreciate the presentation. Over the last, better part of 10 years, actually, well, it'll be a little over, excuse me, since 1998, the Great Overland Station has received several grants like this. One date, or one, 1.7 in Phase 1, 2.1 in Phase 2, 1.1 in Phase 3, and the 45, excuse me, $450,000 for this current phase right now. So we're making some great progress up there with no cost to the taxpayer, the city of Topeka. And I would really recommend any people who have not been up there, both regionally and within Topeka, who haven't seen the work that's up there. It's absolutely amazing. And I do want to give a special thanks to Ms. Allen and Ms. Fager, who have been working very tirelessly in this process, and I want to wish them the best of luck, and they will need help in raising the private funds in the amount of $135,000. So write those checks and send them on over.
Thank you. Is there other discussion or comments? Not all those in favor, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no.
We have yes.
Eight having voted yes, the project budget and resolution is approved. Next item is E, denial of an alarm license.
E is denial of an alarm license appeal for Anthony Brazil.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Your Honor. The denial of the alarm license was based on non-disclosure of information on the application. I'd like to ask Jalen Cop, legal counsel to the police department, to present and answer any questions.
Good evening, everyone. I'll give you the background of the application of the license and why we denied it, and we're asking you to affirm that. One of the questions on the application was, have you ever been convicted of a misdemeanor, traffic infraction, or other ordinance violation? The answer was yes, but Mr. Brazil indicated it was careless driving in Springfield, Missouri, and that did not have a date or disposition that that had happened. The next question was, have you ever had a conviction expunged or been granted diversion? His answer was not applicable. After receiving the application, the KBI background revealed that he had been convicted of theft of property by the District Court of Benton County, Arkansas, on June 1, 2012. He was sentenced 10 days in jail and to pay fines and court costs totaling $410. His jail sentence was suspended, and that conviction was not disclosed on his application. Within the application, I believe all of the Within the application, I believe all of the attachments were put on the, what you have. At the end of the application, where Mr. Brazil signs, it says, "I understand the information on this application will be relied upon in determining whether to grant or deny an alarm agent's license. Therefore, I certify under penalty of perjury that the information contained in this application is true, complete, and correct." If you also, I will refer to the Topeka Municipal Code 51540, which states that in filling out the application, it should contain as a minimum the following information: a list of all felony convictions or misdemeanor convictions within the last 10 years involving theft or destruction of property of any person required to be named on the application. And further on, in 51560, at the very end, when it talks about receipt of the application, it says, "The chief may deny the license for false statements on the application." Therefore, Mr. Brazil was denied the license based on the fact that he did not disclose the conviction to us. I will be happy to take any questions if you have any.
Are there questions for Ms. Cop? Ms. Ortiz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jalen, what does this allow him to do, like install?
This is actually to go to sell them door to door.
Oh, to sell them?
Uh-huh.
Okay. Okay. All right.
Other questions? Sorry. Go ahead.
So he has to get this license to go door to door?
Uh-huh.
But he doesn't actually get to install them?
No, he's not a technician, or he does not maintain them.
Okay.
Other questions for Ms. Cop? Or Ms. Heller?
This is not a question, but a comment for those who are new on the council. I just want to give some credit to the legal staff. We have had to deal with these fairly consistently over the years, and when I first came on the council, the language was kind of vague in terms of what they needed to fill out, and there was kind of a disconnect between the ordinance and the application form. So we ran into some situations where the applicants pretty clearly had struggled with what to fill out. What Ms. Cop just went over is very clear between the ordinance and the application form. I appreciate that, and it allowed you to go through and walk us through the steps clearly, too, and I just appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cop. And as you know, the claimant in this case has the right to appeal to the council, and this is what the process is going through, that he has the right to appeal to the council, that the, you know, that we are here to deny or to take action otherwise. Is Mr. Brazil here this evening? He does. He has the right to appear before us. I do not see that he is present. So, council members, your... Ms. Ortiz moves to approve the denial. Mr. Harmon seconds. Discussion. All those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no.
We have eight yes.
Eight having voted yes, the denial is approved. Moving to item F, resolution on downtown.
F is a resolution introduced by Councilmember Karen Heller, approving a special event known as Jazzin' It Up Downtown Event.
Ms. Heller?
This is a resolution that would allow Downtown Topeka, Inc. to sponsor the Jazzin' It Up event on September 21. Ms. Edie Smith is here. If there are questions, I'll move for approval.
Been moved to approve the resolution. Ms. Elise LaSecond. Discussion. All those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no. I vote yes.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes, the resolution is approved. Are there applications for item? There are no applications, so that completes the new business. We'll move to first readings.
B is an ordinance introduced by Councilmember Chad Mann, Speaker, amending City of Topeka Code Section 255040, and specifically repealing said original section concerning the duties and responsibilities of the Human Relations Commission. First reading. B is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Jim Colson, authorizing improvement project number T-281032 for rehabilitation of the Lane Pump Station at the Water Treatment Plant, approving cost estimates of the proposed improvements, and doing all other things necessary and incidental thereto, and authorizing the use of utility operation funds, authorizing the publication of the notice of intention of the governing body of the City of Topeka, Kansas, to issue and sell revenue bonds of said city to make such improvements, which constitutes improvements to the municipally-owned water, water pollution control, and storm water utility system of the City of Topeka, Shawnee County, Kansas, pursuant to KSA 10-101 and 10-1201 et cetera, and all amendments thereto, authorizing issuance of general obligation bonds to pay the cost of the project, which further constitutes a general improvement to the city's sanitary and/or storm water and sewage disposal system pursuant to City of Topeka Code Section A 12-1, and authorizing the borrowing of funds from the KDHE SRF loan to pay the cost thereof. First reading. C is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Jim Colson, imposing a real estate lien pursuant to KSA 12-808C upon certain lots and pieces of ground in Shawnee County, Kansas, to pay the cost for utility services where such payments to the city have not been made due to neglect, failure, or refusal to pay. First reading.
Thank you. Those are the readings, the miscellaneous. We'll go on to presentations, first by the city manager.
Thank you, Your Honor. Really, just a very brief comment. The activity pertaining to the PVC and the ordinance is very good news. I think sometimes it is easy to miss all the hard work and struggle that goes into certain things, and you have a very large number of groups that had to come together and come up with a plan, and a trust level to work together to make this work. And I had an opportunity to see this thing work from a very challenging situation to one that's moving very smoothly. The step that you all took today was very important, and I think that it will prove to be highly beneficial not only to Washburn and the KBI, but to the city of Topeka and the residents here. So I congratulate you on that activity, and it really was a very good thing. I do just have to announce that we're bringing a new city manager candidate into the world by son and daughter-in-law. They're going to make me grandpa for the first official time, so I just want to announce that on TV.
Good. Thank you. Thank you for the comments on the Public Building Commission.
Not about the baby.
Our grandbaby report. Well, I just want to acknowledge, again, the success of a, our Metropolitan Topeka Airport Authority signing an agreement yesterday that we will start having jet service twice daily between Chicago and Topeka. I think this is extremely significant from many areas, both, of course, economic development, just the leisure aspect, but also just raising the level of what type of city we are. Those of us that go back when we built the airport terminal, we went through some difficult times, but now to have this occurring is just so significant, and it, I think we can all just sort of puff out our chest a little bit, because we're a little bit better city, a little bit higher level city, and I think this time there is a commitment that it will work, that we continue, and it will be successful, and it will continue. We go to Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you, Mayor. I would second that notion on the service to the airport. That is a significant advancement, and something that I think we should be proud of. I also was asked to pass on regrets from Councilman Mann, Speaker, that he couldn't be here for the first reading of his ordinance on the Human Relations Commission. He wanted to, he wanted me to express his support for it. I join him in that support and think it's an important step towards the inclusiveness and the continuation of the image of this city as a city that respects the rights of all and is inclusive and respectful to all of our citizens. Thank you.
Mr. Harmon? Ms. Heller?
Just quick congratulations to all the organizations that had fabulous events over the weekend. I can't imagine that there's anybody in town that hit all of them, because there was simply too much going on. The ones I think of are the BBQ and Blues Downtown, which was two nights, and quite a partnership as well, and fabulously successful. The Hot Smokin' BBQ event, which was a fundraiser for one of our churches. The Dart and Dartini with young professionals just literally racing around town, and the word is that everybody who participated, they were up to 38 teams this year. They want to have 40 in each of the events next year, and that everybody was just talking about coming back. And then the Huff and Puff, our annual balloon rally. There's just a lot going on in town, and other people can fill in what I forgot, but just kudos. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Campos? Ms. Ortiz? Ms. Everhart? Ms. Elise La... Ms. Schwartz?
Of course.
Of course. Well, we have to, you get to close.
I just wanted to give a shout out to Keep America Beautiful. They had their volunteer recognition luncheon today, and I happened to be able to attend that, along with Commissioner Bueller was there also. But they're doing absolutely fabulous job in keeping not only America and Kansas beautiful, but also Topeka. And I was just amazed at the number of volunteers that are in this organization, and so anybody that I know that's going to be retiring, I'm going to hand them this pamphlet and say, you know, this is a great organization. And then also yesterday, I attended the Heartland Healthy Neighborhoods meeting, and with my background in health, I am very, very excited about the things that they have going on. And it was at Avondale East, the Neighborhood Empowerment Center, and I got a tour of that to see what they're doing, and two of my neighbors happened to be there volunteering. So I think there's just a lot of good volunteering going on in Topeka. Thank you.
Thank you for the comments on Keep America Beautiful. It's an important program, and I know a number of us had conflicts and couldn't be there, but that's a major, it's their volunteer recognition time once a year. We have one person signed up for public comment, David Collop. Yeah, if you want to make a microphone available, I think we have, I think you, whichever... We want to make it convenient for you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Hi, my name's David Collop, and I'm here today representing a disabled community of 20-plus people at the bottom of 28th and California. The reason I'm here today is we desperately need a sidewalk completed on our side of the street. When they put that Walmart in, the traffic on my street is going to increase by at least 20%. I would say, traffic's already getting kind of ridiculous on my street, and the proposed route right now is unacceptable. As it sits now, somebody's going to get hurt. The street needs lighting. It just, it needs to be developed. You guys mentioned you guys want to keep Topeka beautiful. If you come down there and just take a look and see, you would see what I see, and you would realize, yeah, this place needs a little bit of work to make it beautiful. It has the potential to be so beautiful down there, because it's right by Lake Shawnee, and if you completed that sidewalk on our side of the street, you could take it almost all the way to Lake Shawnee and give us something really beautiful to look at, because I have a car, I have a life, I've got lots of friends, so I can get out and I can, you know, go do stuff. There's a lot of people stuck right there in that area, and I want to give them something beautiful. I can go see beautiful things, I can go do whatever. They're, I don't want to, you know, they're landlocked, for lack of a better word, they're landlocked. And I want to give them a safe route to Walmart, because as it stands now, somebody's going to get hurt, because there's a curve on this street. It's not straight. And Walmart sits on the right side of my complex, and somebody with a disability is just going to go right up that right side, our sidewalk now, you go up like halfway, and it just, it just ends. Then you have to cross the street, go up the street, pass an intersection, and get back up on the left side, and then go down to the most dangerous intersection, I think one of the most dangerous intersections, Topeka, 28th and California, because there's a concrete block sitting right there. I have, when I'm driving, I have to peek my car like nut. It scares me, man. I'm afraid I'm going to get hit one of these days. If I can, I avoid it. And you're talking people with disabilities, some of them have diminished capacities, are not smart and intelligent like I am, don't exactly make rational decisions sometimes, and you're talking people going to Walmart to get stuff. Now, they have to carry these groceries, right? Now, I could probably just maybe do it myself, and I mean just, maybe, as talented as I am, I could just maybe do it. Other people are going to have problems, and I just want to make sure that they have a safe, as direct as you can make it, access to Walmart. You know, I understand, can't make a bridge crossing the creek, I understand that's, you know, but at least give us a safe, lit route. And I'm afraid somebody, as it sits down, is going to get hurt, and that's just my main concern.
Mr. Collop, what is the specific street you're?
28th and California.
Okay, but it's going down 28th?
It's going down, yes, going down 28th Street.
It's really 28th. It's along 28th east of California.
It's east and west at the bottom of 28th Street, off of California. Yes, sir.
Okay, and your points are taken, and I know your council member has mentioned to me that she is aware of the situation, so we will, it'll be going into public works and to see what can be done.
I appreciate you guys working, just come down and look, and I appreciate you guys just taking a look and working with me, working with us on this project. I mean, it means a lot to us, just to know you guys care.
Okay, thank you. We appreciate you coming here and making your comments. Seeing no other business, the meeting is adjourned.